I'm sorry.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Regular board meeting, November 17th. Can I get a roll call?
President Sterling.
Here.
Vice President Johnson.
Here.
Board Member McKnight.
President.
Here. Board Member Carroll. Here. Board Member Johnson. Here. Secretary. Here. Can't help but quote Senator.
Tariya Yarbo, Superintendent.
Shelly, we're here for the shall or for the interruption.
All right, it is my pleasure, and sorry for the feedback. This evening, we have some of our youngest friends with us to lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance. Now they're hiding from me. Well, it is my pleasure this evening to introduce students from Parker Center who will be here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We're hoping that we make it up on stage okay.
Good evening. We are excited to welcome some of our kindergarten Parker pups to the pledge tonight. These students were nominated by their teachers for being respectful, safe, and ready to learn. So they're going to introduce themselves real quick, and then we will do the Pledge of Allegiance and our Parker Center Promise. So we have Vincent. Can you wave? Do you want to say it? Say Willow. Willow.
Harrison.
Joshua.
Avery.
Andrew.
Noah.
Maddick.
Lexley.
Kellen.
Talon.
Avery.
Asher.
Warden.
Owen.
Ari.
Sebastian.
What's that?
Asher.
Milani.
Kason.
Kaylee.
Garnet.
Millie.
Elliot.
Ember.
Aria.
Justice.
All right. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, friends, the flag is this way. The flag is behind us. Are we ready?
Yes.
I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So turn around. And now for our Parker Center Promise.
I promise to make Parker Center a better place. I am respectful. I am safe. I am ready to learn.
Great job, and thank you all for showing such good behavior. Parents, we are going to take them back to the hallway. Once we get everybody out, if you want to come get your student, you can grab them and come back in if you want to stay, or you can take them with you. Thank you. They got to take a picture first.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
What are you doing?
Second. Yes. Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. I always say it's hard to follow our kids, and today was no exception. So the mission of the Harlem Consolidated School District, as a part of the community, is to help diverse learners realize their unlimited potential by providing an educational program dedicated to academic excellence and the development of strong character in a safe and respectful learning environment.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a motion to approve board meeting minutes, October 27th, 2025?
Motion.
Board Member McKnight.
Aye.
Board Member Johnson. Aye. Board Member Johnson. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jason Bloom.
Appreciate everybody's patience with the mics.
Well, this evening is my pleasure to recognize some of our student athletes for their successful season. So first off, I'm going to invite some of our middle school athletes. So we're going to face this way. So it's my pleasure this evening to recognize two of our student athletes from cross-country who qualified for the IESA State Cross-Country Meet. We're super excited to have you here. That's a big, big accomplishment. I'm going to turn it over to Coach Tracy to talk about the season a little bit. We're not going to talk about our injury. We're just going to focus on you guys and your season and all the accomplishments that you had. And then we're going to get to hear your names in a second, too. And you guys can actually kind of face this way if you want.
Turn around where you want. Nope. They don't want us to turn around. We're good.
All right, so my name is Tracy Bradford. I am the middle school cross-country coach, and this is my assistant coach, Kaitlyn Adams. We have Gavin Sterling and Scarlett Pickowitz here. We had another year with a large team of 29 runners. We had varying abilities this year. We had 11 returning athletes, and of all of our runners, we had eight summer runners. So they came to cross-country camp this summer. Garlet, Garrett, Gavin and Scarlett were both summer runners. We had a really successful season this year. In the Rock River Athletic Conference races, which were all held at Marshall Middle School, the girls were consistently in first place or second place, and the boys were also, also did very well, taking second place and third place during many of our races. At the All-City Meet, both of our teams took second place for the second year in a row. So that was really, really awesome for us. I'm going to talk a little bit about Gavin first. So Gavin is an eighth grader, and he is a returning athlete for us. He ran track for us last spring, and he did, again, the summer running. He was consistently our top male runner this year. He is a hard worker. He earned his PR at sectionals this year, and he is very much somebody that all of the boys looked up to this year. So congratulations to Gavin. And then we have Scarlett. Scarlett was a new runner for us this year. She's a sixth grade student. She also did summer running, so she came in early and did running with us this summer. Throughout the course of our season, she was not one of our top runners, but she worked very hard this season, and slowly each race grew higher and higher. And at the end of the season, at the All-City Meet, she was our third-place runner behind two eighth graders. And at our sectional race is where she made her big move. She had a super-strong race. She looked so strong, and she got her PR at sectionals, and she was also one of our top 10 finishers out of the whole sectional. So congratulations also to Scarlett.
Well, on behalf of the Harlem School Board, the Harlem School District, congratulations. Job well done. I know that there's a lot of training involved to be successful across country, and so I know that you've been working hard, and we look forward to seeing what comes in the future years. We also want to thank our coaches, because those types of numbers for our programs are largely due to our coaching staff and the support that they provide, the coaching they provide, the relationships they build, and so thank you to you two for establishing a strong program. We're proud of all of you. So on behalf of all of us sitting here, all of those people online, congratulations. Job well done.
Job well done. The same theme, I'm going to invite our high school cross-country athletes up. Tonight, we get to celebrate three of our sectional qualifiers. We had two male cross-country sectional qualifiers and one female. We're excited tonight to recognize and introduce them and their coaches. So we have Coach Martin and Coach Stephanie here, representing the program, and they're going to talk a little about the success in their seasons. Again, we had these three athletes qualify for sectionals, and they had a great season. I know our boys had PRs at, I believe, the sectional meet, right? And so pretty successful season. I'm going to turn it over to Coach Stephanie and talk a little bit about Maya first.
Maya is one of our most dedicated and hard-working athletes on our team. She is always pushing herself to run faster and run farther than she did the day before. This is her third year, and we are excited that we'll show, that she will be back again next year to run even faster. She ran a PR of 1907 this year at Peoria Notre Dame, which is the state course. So she has a lot of talent, and we're really excited to have her back next year. She was in the mix. Next year.
Well, we look forward to having you back, maybe next year, state qualifying. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Job well done. Now I'm going to turn it over to Coach Martin to talk a little about the employee season.
Hello, everyone. Welcome. I am Coach Marty Contreras. I'm in my first year at Harlem as a cross-country coach, and this is how I thank my assistant. What makes this team and these boys unique is Holly and I didn't get aboard until late July, early August. So for most programs, it takes having kids that are really dedicated to the sport to make them run. And everyone knows the first half of the cross-country season is the summer. Well, these boys right here, along with their teammates, put in the work all summer before we got there. So when me and Holly came aboard, it was a little easier, because they were already dedicated and committed. Our season started off at Jefferson. We got second as a team at Jefferson, and James won at Jefferson. From there, we just kept getting better and better throughout the season. And mind you, we only had a couple seniors on the team. So we relied on these guys a lot this season. They're the best of friends, so they pushed each other. So one week, one would PR, then the next week, another would PR, and then they'd keep getting better and better every week. We got to conference, and unfortunately, James cramped up at conference. But Tyler led the way, and he finished 12th and got all-conference honorable mention. Well, James, as determined as he is, didn't let that deteriorate him. And the following week, at regionals, he came back really strong with Tyler. And not only did these two qualify for sectionals, but they also pulled every one of their young teammates, because we only had one senior in the lineup at regionals, to PRs for the season. So when we look at next season, we're excited, because we only lose one or two seniors, but we return everybody, and a lot of it is because of the building blocks with these guys. So we're pretty excited about the work they put in, and we look forward to the future.
Well, and coaches, obviously give yourselves credit, because you have a lot to do with that. But kudos to you as well, gentlemen, for the hard work that you put in. I know you put in a lot of hard work in as well. And so on behalf of the board, our community, our staff, our families, congratulations. Job well done. Thank you for representing us so well and for your hard work. We look forward to maybe seeing you back here next year, honoring you again with the same success or more. So congratulations to all of you. More recognitions this evening. On behalf of our board and Mr. Thompson, I just want to give a shout-out, because as we know, like, and if you follow us on our socials or read our newsletter, there are so many different things that we get to celebrate and so many things that our students and staff are doing on a regular basis. And we can't obviously always bring them here to celebrate all of them, but I do want to give a few shout-outs on behalf of Mr. Thompson. A big thank you and congratulations to our students that participated in the I M E A performance this past weekend. We also had our plays, and so we had some great performances from our students at Harlem High School. We want to give a big thanks to Baker Street Burgers as well for their continued support. They have been supporting our culinary students for the past few years, and they're, they're a great supporter of that program and offering their expertise. And then also, lastly, a shout-out, if you saw on social media that our boys bowling team placed first in the most recent tournament out of 40 teams, which is a pretty awesome accomplishment. And so again, on behalf of the board, congratulations to those individuals and teams and coaches, but also to all of the other recognitions that deserve credit over these past few weeks, because we've had a lot of them. So congratulations to all of them. And then lastly, November 15th was School Board Member Day. And so each year on November 15th, we join the I S B, the Illinois Association of School Boards, to recognize our school board members for their commitment, their dedication, and time that they spend serving in this voluntary role. As you're aware, there's a lot of time that goes into functioning or serving as a board member. These individuals serve primarily for your terms, and there's a lot that we throw at them, from finances to policies to overall governance and such. And so we have just a really, really short, brief video with a few friends of ours saying thank you for the things that our school board members are responsible for.
Thank you for empowering me to use my voice.
Thank you, school board members.
Thank you for being in the Backstreet Lab.
Thank you for doing what we're meant.
Thank you for our school board.
Thank you, board, for providing our students with the best technology.
Thank you, school board members.
So obviously, that's just a small, a few thank-yous, and we have a lot of staff and students and community members that thank you all for your service and your time and effort and commitment. And so on behalf of all of us that are here, our administrative team, our staff, our families, thank you for, for your service of Harlem School District. We greatly appreciate it. And we have, as a token of our appreciation, a gift, which I think you've already received. We have a winter hat in there, as we live in the Midwest. I think that would be something that's definitely helpful, especially for people like us with no hair. And then we have another little shirt in there. It's just a small token of appreciation. I know it doesn't pay its dividends for all the work that you do, but thank you again for, for your support and commitment to our community.
At this time, we have no comments from the community? Okay. Move it over to approval of the bills.
All right, thank you. The total payables for this period were $1,887,342.52. There were two payrolls this period in the amount of $6,629,151.37, for total expenditures of $8,516,493.89. Split out by fund, the education fund paid $6,981,963.50. The operations and maintenance fund paid $389,614.23. The transportation fund paid $363,243.11. The I R F Social Security Fund paid $255,807.38. And the capital project fund paid $177,752.25. The life safety fund paid $348,113.42, again for total expenditures of $8,516,493.89. Are there any unanswered bill questions? That is it for the bills.
Motion to approve the bills. Turn it over to Dr. Erb. And it goes back to Josh Rand.
All right, thank you. My first item this evening is a recommendation to approve a resolution declaring surplus property at the administration center, H9 Harlem High School and Parker Center. Any questions? Next is a recommendation to accept the September 2025 Treasury Report. Are there any follow-up questions after we reviewed it at committee of the whole? The next item is a recommendation to approve the 2025 tax levy, and we reviewed that last month at committee of the whole. Are there any final questions on the tax levy? 10B4 is a recommendation to approve the 2026 school maintenance project grant, and that it would be for new lighting in the stadium outside here. Any questions on that? Next is a recommendation to approve a resolution authorizing remaining bond proceeds to be used for other fire prevention, safety, energy conservation, and school security purposes. So this is the remaining life safety funds after we did the H9 and middle school roof last year in the amount of $3.2 million. That is incorporating this building Harlem High School as we look at what a boiler and potentially fire alarm would be, look, a new boiler and fire alarm would look like for this building. Is there any questions on that resolution? Next is a recommendation to approve an independent contract agreement with Janice Bubdick to provide tutoring services for students who attend Concordia Lutheran School for the FY '26 school year for a total amount of $8,100, paid with ESEA Title I funds. 10B7 is a recommendation to approve an agreement with Thayer Energy Solutions to update lighting in the gym, fieldhouse, gym mezzanine, wrestling and weight room. I don't think weight room's down there, just the wrestling room at Harlem High School. That is a cost of $18,634.59. I do want to note, though, that the annual savings is $15,219. So it's a net $3,400 the first year, and then we will save $15,000 in addition to updating lighting for about 61,000 square feet of the building here. So it'll look great, and this is an area that we've done lighting here also. So are there any questions on that? Okay, next is a recommendation to approve an agreement with Formative for professional development for the middle school and high school on January 5th, 2026, at a cost of $4,200, and that is paid with Title II funds. Questions on that? Next, 10B9 is a recommendation to approve the purchase of OpenSciEd ECA Science Kits for the middle school and high school science departments at a cost of $14,481.60, paid with Title IV funds. Okay, and my last item is a recommendation to approve electricity provider services bid and approval for the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations to lock electricity rates. That is myself, so that allows me to go out to bid and lock them when the bids are open, if it makes sense and is best for the district. And then I would bring that to the next board meeting. Any questions?
Does that have anything to do with the solar panels that are out in the field up there?
So it doesn't directly, this is where we're getting, so we are going to get X number of kilowatts for that. And so when I talked to the consultant, he said that that is just a bill credit, and so that the solar on behind meter is more important to that calculation than the community solar, but it is all factored in, so.
I'm at a direct energy, I'm saying nine cents, seven cents a kilowatt.
Yep, currently, our combat, our power that combat delivers comes through, comes through constellation right now. So yes, it would be that. Yes, yep. I 100% agree. Any other questions on that? That is my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Shirley Wagner.
Good evening. I have the recommendation to approve the personnel agenda and addendum. We have 12 resignations, three transfers, one leave of absence request, nine employments, one federation bank request, and one new position at Parker Center, requesting one Level B paraprofessional at the Pup Lab. And this is a result of new students coming to the Pup Lab program needing this assistance per their I E V. That's it for me. Thank you.
Jatroy Yarborough.
Thank you, Board President Sterling. Good evening, everyone. The first item here is a recommendation to approve first reading of policy updates from November 12th, 2025 Policy Committee. It's attached. Is there any questions? Okay. The next two are Freedom of Information Act. The first one requests dated October 16th, 2025, was submitted by Sherri Reed of Smart Cure requesting all purchasing records from 7/7/2025 to current, and the district responded to the requester on October 30th, 2025, with the inclusive documents. And then the second Freedom of Information Act request dated October 16th of 2025 was submitted by Justin Winnick requesting all purchasing records from 7/1/2022 to current, and then the district responded to the Requestor on November 7th, 2025, with the inclusive documents. Any questions on the FOIA request? Okay. So our next item leads us into our district utilization proposal. As you know, the board tasked us with, you know, a couple of months ago, to come up with a proposal that we felt, you know, could positively impact our Harlem community. And so we're going to do that proposal right now for you all. All right, so Harlem Board Members and our community stakeholders, here's our elementary building consolidated proposal dated November 17th of this year. The rationale for the change is declining enrollment, several buildings at or below roughly 60% utilization, and then having a financial deficit of $3.1 million. Here's our birth rate trends from Winnebago County from 1990 into 2022, when we can capture it. As you can see, way up at top in 1990 at our highest, we were about 4,156. And then we kind of go up and down from there, concluding with what we can gather from 2020, which obviously was COVID, where we had 3,289 students. The next is our enrollment trends from K5. The next is our enrollment trends from K five to two thousand nine to twenty twenty-six school years. Now, a couple of years within here are, it was K six enrollment and not just K five. So as you can see at our highest, we were three thousand, one hundred and ninety-two students. And it kind of goes down and then goes from there, ending with two thousand, six hundred and sixty-one students. So for comparative enrollment, Loves Park, seventy-three point five percent compared enrollment. Machesney, seventy-five point six percent. Maple, fifty-four point one percent. Marquette, fifty point six percent. Olson Park, sixty-eight point seven percent. Parker Center, sixty-one point eight percent. Ralston is at forty-five percent. Rock Cut, fifty-four point nine percent. And then Windsor at eighty-one point one percent. So the impact of underutilization, you have excess space increases per pupil costs. Right sizing lets us reinvest savings into our classrooms. And then stability reduces repeated boundary changes. All right, financial trends, Mr. Rand.
Thank you. So what this slide shows is the last four years of actual results from twenty-two to twenty-four and last year's actual FY twenty-five. So FY twenty-six is our current budgeted year, and then there's two years of projections if we don't do anything in here. And so what you see here is there's a source of revenue that we get from corporate profits, and that has been dropping quite a bit. So you combine that with E B F from the states, the state funding starting to level off. And this is what this projection looks like. In addition to sailors and benefits and insurance has been a big driver for us. So looking forward, we look, we're looking at decreasing interest rates, additional decreasing corporate personal property replacement tax, Medicaid reduction, and the state is two point two billion in the whole. So we are looking at potentially additional state funding cuts there in addition to rising health insurance costs. So these two charts at the bottom, the one on the left is if we don't do this recommendation. Those are what the fund balance would be over the next couple of years. And then the one on the right is with the accepting the recommendation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rand. Our goal objectives for this proposal, put students first and ensure equitable access to core and specialized programs, better align our enrollment capacity and program access across schools, reduce operating costs, prioritize facility condition, safety, and adaptable learning spaces, optimize our transportation with two elementary tiers. As you know, we have currently have two of our elementary schools that are on the third tier. And then ensure long-term flexibility to respond to enrollment fluctuations. The criteria that we use to make this decision, maintain coherent boundaries and logical school locations, balance special education placements, and ensure equitable multilingual services, strategically place programs, E C, S T P, Learning Lab, O L A, A O P, and then Fine Arts, and then target utilization of three hundred plus students per school where feasible. And finally, to prioritize facility condition and operating costs. Now the process. Okay, how we got here? We reviewed seven different facility scenarios to align enrollment, instruction, and building capacity. We narrowed it down to four scenarios for deeper study using consistent criteria such as capacity, program placement and flexibility, operations, and then transportation. We found that in every scenario, buildings became fuller and shared spaces are used differently while maintaining class size and protecting specialized services. So the summary of the scenarios that we reviewed. The first scenario was familiar. It was one through five structure that eases pressure on specialized programs at Machesney by relocating the Learning Lab, but provides limited fiscal relief and little room for program growth. In this scenario, the reduction was two buildings. In scenario two, it was a neighborhood K through five schools that reduced transitions and strengthened community ties, but tightened space in several buildings and limited or limit early childhood capacity. This was also a reduction of two buildings. Scenario six was a two-year grade band model that concentrates teacher expertise and supports strong curriculum alignment, but adds more complex multi-site logistics and offers limited flexibility to expand specialized programs like early childhood and O L A. If we would have went with this scenario, it would have been a reduction of three buildings. So finally, scenario seven, two-year grade bands with a magnet school for early childhood, for prevention initiative, Fine Arts, and O L A, reducing program fragmentation, creating room to grow specialized programs, and offering the most balanced and sustainable structure. This was a reduction of two buildings. So scenario seven is the one that we're proposing to you all today. So here's a summary of the change. The West Band would be Parker Center, K one, Life Skills S T P. Loves Park would be second and third, Learning Lab. Ralston would be four to five, Learning Lab. East would be Windsor, K one, Learning Lab. Rock Cut would be second and third, Life Skills S T P. And then Machesney would be four or five, Life Skills S T P. Marquette would be a magnet program, where we house our magnet programs, P I, E C, O L A, Fine Arts, and then A O P until phased out. All right, Dr. Bloom with the enrollment boundaries.
So obviously with scenario seven, this looks very different than what we're currently experiencing with our structure that we have now as a district. With this, you can see that we're proposing an east and west band or school boundary system. So you're going to have essentially two school boundaries in this recommendation. On the West, obviously to the left of the screen is your purple boundary. That would be your West Schools as Dr. Yarborough just previously mentioned. And then to the right side or east side would be your East Band Schools. Obviously, this is a map that, you know, you're trying to kind of zero in on some of the boundary stuff. We do have this, we will have a website that I'll be sharing about a little bit later. But this will have a zoomable map that will allow you to zoom down into the street level to look at that line that breaks in the middle. Obviously, our boundaries as a district do not change in this. And so your external boundaries on the West and the East are going to remain the same. That does not change boundaries in our neighboring school districts. It's really that middle line that you're going to be looking at most closely when you look at east and west boundaries. But I'll share more about that shortly. One of the other things that I was involved in in this process is really looking at site capacity. And so when we look at capacity, you're going to see a few columns. We're looking at current student enrollment, our proposed student enrollment under scenario seven, along with potential classroom spaces. And so there's a little caveat to the far right column, especially for my principal friends that are sitting here, that, you know, we're looking at overall spaces. And so we recognize that when we look at the potential classroom spaces, some of those spaces, for example, at Parker Center, are smaller spaces that may house like a specialized program. But we are looking at the total number of spaces that are available for use in our schools. And so when you look at our current enrollment and then you compare that to what the proposed enrollment would be for scenario seven, you can see those increases. Again, our goal is to target kind of that three fifty range. We really want to look at our enrollment in our capacities north of seventy-five percent. And so when we look at the studies that we've done in the past, you know, really at the elementary level, you don't really want to go more than eighty-five percent utilization in your total facility space. You can go a little bit higher in the elementary, but that creates really difficult scheduling for us. And so we really tried to kind of get ourselves down into close to that seventy-five percent range that allows capacity and space for us to function, to have additional spaces as necessary for programs, but also allow some flexibility as we move forward so that we can ensure that as enrollment, if it starts to rebound up or we have, you know, a higher cohort of kindergartners that come in, whatever it may be, that we have the ability to adapt with that. So here you can see that comparison between current enrollment and the proposed enrollment with scenario seven changes. I'm going to pass. Yep, oh, you got a mic.
I guess this, thank you. So talking about some of the educational impact with this particular model. First of all, right now, our early learning center is K only. By having in a, I feel like I'm echoing, sorry. Having in a two-year band allows foundational skills to be supported and in a developmentally appropriate practices for two years rather than the one that we are currently looking at. By having more teachers in the same area teaching the same thing, it allows easier collaboration and supporting great level specialists. Right now, if you are a special education teacher in one of our elementary buildings, you might have a first grade class and a fifth grade class you might be working with. This allows you to really specialize within bands. Same thing with interventionists. We are looking at having two interventionists in each of our east-west buildings, actually going up in the number of interventionists compared to what we currently have. Also having two social workers in each of the east-west buildings. By having a larger number of students, it allows an opportunity for departmentalizing at the upper grades. Because departmentalizing is an option, we see being able to provide additional supports for our kids who are currently in the A O P program. Right now, if you're in the A O P program, you are high in both reading and math. However, we have a bunch of kiddos that are strong in one or the other who don't receive those extra opportunities. By having departmentalization at the fifth grade level, we would have the opportunity to have an honors at both the east and the west side, allowing greater opportunities and a student could be in an honors math and maybe a regular reading or vice versa. So because we feel like we'd be able to support the students that way is the reason why we are discussing or believing the phasing out of the A O P program. The Magnet School allows an opportunity for each of those programs to have a focus. It also allows the P I to early childhood collaboration as well as O L A and Fine Arts collaborating. There are some things that they have in common that would be able to use that space collaboratively. One of the things about having the Magnet School is that O L A often teeters between one and two sections needed. In all of the other models that we looked at, we would not be able to go beyond what we currently have and have one at each grade level. Also, this model allows the expansion of E C. All of the other models only allow two classrooms of early childhood where this allows some space for that to occur. As far as balanced classes, right now, we have buildings that have specialized programs that have over thirty percent of students with I E Ps in the building, which means that you can never get classes under thirty percent. By having a greater number of students, you are able to balance classes under thirty percent. It also allows an opportunity when you have so many classes that if you have personalities that don't necessarily work with one another, you're able to spread them out a little bit more. In our current model, E S L services are in three buildings and families have to choose whether or not to take on, to go and be part of E S L services or to stay in their neighborhood schools. This would allow us to have E S L services in each of our seven buildings. So no student has to choose to leave their friends in order to receive the services. And then lastly, here are more balanced S E S. Right now, our S E S across the district ranges from forty to in the seventies. And by splitting east and west, it will balance the two. It will not be equal, but it would be a lot closer than what our schools currently are at. Yeah, so we have forty percent of our students receive free and reduced lunch like at Ralston. And we're right around fifty at Olson Park. But we have other buildings being Loves Park and Maple and Windsor that are in the seventies. And so by splitting it, those percentages get split, kind of like when you look at Parker Center, because you have all of the kindergartners at Parker Center, they're in the sixty percents. I don't know who asked the remote. I guess they brought it over to me. He snuck it over and I didn't know. I'm sorry, everyone. But there is some drawbacks. First of all, like I said, in each of the scenarios, it was moving early childhood from three hundred and sixty to eighty seats. We know that early childhood has one of the greatest impacts on students, especially our at-risk students. Early childhood helps lessen the opportunity gaps that are out there. It increases graduation rate. It has one of the biggest bangs for their bucks out there. So the decision is nothing to do with our educational philosophies in regards to early childhood. We value our early childhood educators and their services. This strictly comes down to our financial realities right now. And with our realities, we can't continue with what we are currently doing. Consequently, what the plan is, is the district has agreed to go with eighty seats. But as soon as Illinois.gov takes over the grant, I plan on reaching out to find out whether or not we could lessen the number of students that are currently being serviced and see if we can get to a number in which we could add additional classrooms instead of just the two and stay living within our means. We value early childhood. We would love to have more of it, but unfortunately, it's just the situation we're in. But it is an impact going from three hundred and sixty to eighty seats. The other thing is the multiple transitions. Right now, for some of our families, they have kids that go from kindergarten, they go to their building, their first through fifth, and then middle school. That's not true for our families who are in the Machesney and Marquette. They go from Parker Center to Machesney, sorry, Parker Center to Marquette to Machesney. So it would be the same number of transitions as what we currently do with the students in those two buildings. But it would be, it would be three transitions for our whole district.
All right. Dr. Erb just talked about the balance in the east-west scenario. And the east-west configuration will also allow for parity in staffing as well. I wanted to bring that to your attention. And also, just to reemphasize that each east-west building will be staffed with two social workers and interventionists. We currently have three vacant certified positions that are unfilled. We will pause those at this time. As far as reductions go, this plan does result in some significant reductions in force. And so I'll go over them with you right now. These are projections at this time. We would see a decrease of thirty-three point five certified positions with an additional five teacher reductions as A O P phases out. It would result in a decrease of thirty-eight point one support staff positions and a decrease of three full-time substitute positions.
Okay, so this is, slide is for the financial impact of this proposal. I do want to note that the Ed Fund FY twenty-seven, that is a net number after we reduce the grant funds from the state. So that is from mainly sailors and benefits for those three years, operations and maintenance is a reduction of custodians and reducing the gas and electric at the buildings. And the transportation fund in FY twenty-seven, really both years, is from a reduction of the E C midday routes on that. So the total savings over the three years in this proposal is four point one million dollars. That's it for this slide. Any questions? You have any questions? So if something where like this were to not end up going through, that another option would be possibly a referendum, which would be in the 9% range, about $5 million.
Before I share the next steps, obviously, we know that, you know, this is incredibly difficult to make these types of decisions and really to reevaluate how we do things and to address a deficit like we're looking at. You know, our focus, as was mentioned, is to really ensure that we increase utilization in order to make sure that our buildings are running efficiently, but also obviously tackle the deficit that Josh has been talking about. And so because of this, and obviously there's going to be tons of questions and we have a lot of processing to do, both as staff, as families, as a community, just want to kind of give an overview of what's going to happen next. And so immediately following this meeting, I will be sending out communication to our staff that will give a little more detail to an email that they received earlier today that will have kind of a breakdown of what the recommendation is, along with some links. We will be activating some webpages on our website along with a community impact or a community input form, excuse me, where our staff, families and community will be able to submit questions, provide some feedback on the recommendation. In that website, we will also have the actual proposal that will lay things out. There's a document that the board received this evening and that we will now be sharing with you as well that gives you the breakdown of kind of all of the things that were explored. Obviously, what you saw today was just a quick highlight of some of the things that were part of the research and how we got to recommendation number seven. You'll get a little bit of information about what the other scenarios were and get a lot more detail to the stuff that was covered today. And so I will also be sending a message to all of our families this evening as well, somewhat similar to our staff, but obviously tailored to our families. This will also, again, give them direction to our website for information where they can read the proposal, provide input. On our website will also include the school boundary map, as I mentioned, that's integrated within Google so people can zoom in to see where they fall in the east and west school bands. They'll have the opportunity to provide that input in there as well. We will be working with our local media as well to share this information. But then, over the coming weeks, we will have some opportunities, obviously as a board, as an administrative team, to review the feedback that we receive. We will update our website and our FAQs based on some of the conversation or comments that come through our input form so that we can ensure that we're highlighting and hitting the things that people maybe have questions about. But through that, we will also have three public hearings, location to be determined just based on facility availability. But we will have public hearings on December 1st, 2nd and 3rd. And this will be an opportunity for people to come in to make comments, for us to talk through things with the board if necessary. Again, we'll be looking at that input from our feedback surveys as well as that input. And then that will give our board some guidance as they navigate the decision-making process which will occur on December 15th.
All right, Board President Sterling, that ends my report for tonight. And then I want to also add on to what Dr. Bloom said. This is a very difficult decision that we made, very difficult proposal that obviously affects our entire community. And so please be sure to give us feedback when Dr. Bloom sends that information out so that we can look at it and then our board can make an informed decision. So, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I'm just interested that we had, I believe it was, let me look at the pages. Page 14 shows Marquette having the magnet programs and Machesney having fourth and fifth life skills and STP. And I'm curious, being that Machesney has larger classrooms, why we are not leaving the fine arts program over there, also because they have the stage and the auditorium and just switching those two buildings? So it's just a curiosity.
It was twofold. One, to help ease, especially with this current fifth grade class, it's approximately 100 students more than the kindergarten class. And so, number one, it helps ease space. Number two, we do feel like there's a lot of great collaborative activities between fine arts and OLA and felt that that would be a benefit for both programs.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the personal agenda and addendum?
Board Member Carlson?
Aye.
Secretary Lee?
Aye.
President Sterling?
Aye.
Vice President Thompson?
Aye.
Board Member McKnight?
Aye.
Board Member King?
Aye.
We don't have any student travel requests. Can I get a motion to approve resolution declaring surplus property?
Motion.
Second.
Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Secretary Lee?
Aye.
President Sterling?
Aye.
Vice President Thompson?
Aye.
Board Member McKnight?
Aye.
Board Member King?
Aye.
Board Member Carlson?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to accept the September 2025 Treasurers Report?
Motion.
Secretary Lee?
Aye.
President Sterling?
Aye.
Vice President Thompson?
Aye.
Board Member McKnight?
Aye.
Board Member King?
Aye.
Board Member Carlson?
Aye.
Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the 2025 certificate of tax levy?
Motion.
Second.
President Sterling?
Aye.
Vice President Thompson?
Aye.
Board Member McKnight?
Yes.
Board Member King?
Aye.
Board Member Carlson?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Secretary Lee?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the 2025 tax levy resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Vice President Thompson?
Aye.
Board Member McKnight?
Aye.
Board Member King?
Aye.
Board Member Carlson?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Secretary Lee?
Aye.
President Sterling?
Aye. Can I get a motion to approve the 2026 school maintenance project grant opportunity?
Motion.
Second.
Board Member McKnight?
Aye.
Board Member King?
Aye.
Board Member Carlson?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Secretary Lee?
Aye.
Vice President Thompson?
Aye.
Aye.
President Sterling?
Aye. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution authorizing remaining bond proceeds to be used for other prevention, fire prevention, safety, energy conservation and school security purposes?
Motion.
Doctor? Board Member King?
Aye.
Board Member Carlson?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Secretary Lee?
Aye.
President Sterling?
Aye.
Vice President Thompson?
Aye.
Board Member King?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement with Janice Bebnek to provide tutoring services for students who attend Concordia Lutheran School for the FY26 school year for a total cost of $8,100, paid with ESEA Title I funds?
Motion.
Second.
Board Member Carlson?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Secretary Lee?
Aye.
President Sterling?
Aye.
Vice President Thompson?
Aye.
Board Member McKnight?
Aye.
Board Member King?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve agreement with Thayer Energy Solutions to update lighting in Jim Fieldhouse, Jim Mezzanine Wrestling and Weight Rooms at Harlem High School for a cost of $18,634.59?
Motion.
Second.
President Sterling?
Aye.
Vice President Thompson?
Aye.
Board Member McKnight?
Aye.
Board Member King?
Aye.
Board Member Carlson?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Secretary Lee?
Can I get a motion to approve agreement with Formative for Professional Development for the Middle School and High School on January 5th, 2026 at a cost of $4,200, paid with Title II funds?
Motion. Second.
President, I mean Vice President Thompson?
Aye.
Board Member McKnight?
Aye.
Board Member King?
Aye.
Board Member Carlson?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Secretary Lee?
Aye.
President Sterling?
Aye. Can I get a motion to approve the purchase of Open Syed ECA Science Kids for the Middle School and High School Science Department at a cost of $14,481.60, paid with Title IV funds?
Motion.
Second.
Board Member McKnight?
Aye.
Board Member King?
Aye.
Board Member Carlson?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Secretary Lee?
Aye.
Vice President Thompson?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve electricity provider services bid and approval for the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations to lock electricity rates?
Motion. Second.
Board Member King?
Aye.
Board Member Carlson?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Secretary Lee?
Aye.
President Sterling?
Aye.
Vice President Thompson?
Aye.
Board Member McKnight?
Aye.
Can I approve, can I get a motion to approve first reading of policy 8.20 AP for the November 12, 2025 Committee of the Whole?
Motion.
Board President, Board Member Carlson?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Secretary Lee?
Aye.
President Sterling?
Aye.
Vice President Thompson?
Aye.
Board Member McKnight?
Aye.
Board Member King?
Aye.
For announcements and discussion, obviously, we're going to add the December 1st, 2nd and 3rd for the community to have meetings with us. You said place to be determined?
Right.
Okay. I guess time will be determined once we find the place that we're going to be. Cool. At this time, I'm going to talk to the board, just saying, this is your time to hear from the community, hear from the people that are out there that you can lean on to get the best and best knowledge you can. Also, ask the questions, as many questions like you asked Rebecca just a minute ago. Please be firing them off to Dr. Yarborough so he can direct them to the proper places so that you guys can come informed and ready to hear from, obviously, the community, but also have the knowledge to know what you want to do.
Well, we have access to where the community contacts, whatever this form is. Can we have that disseminated to the board? Just so that we, you know, otherwise, if they come directly to us, the whole board may not get that information.
Yeah, we'll have access to the input and answers and all that type of stuff. And then we will also provide summaries of that as well, but we'll give you full access so you can read all of that verbatim and the responsibility to provide it.
Herb, I mean, the community feedback's going to be key and critical. They're going to see stuff that we're not going to see, and there's no reason we're one board to make sure we get that information.
Next Committee of the Whole meeting will be December 10th, 2025. Our next regular board meeting will be December 15th, 2025. If there's no comments, questions, concerns, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, guys.